Good morning, everyone. We'll open immediately with the flag. I'd like to read the flag of the United States of America and do the oath of for the stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Anyone have a question? Peter, what's on your mind?
What's on my mind is the water pollution control, I guess, is that on your agenda there? What are you asking about water pollution control? Last October, you stated that you received $2 million. And at that time, it was only $2.6 million to do that facility. And from what I gathered, it's double. Who receives the $2 million when you receive it from the state?
I don't know how that ever entered the picture because we have never received a dime. Not a dime.
It's in the minutes.
If minutes may say, whatever the minutes said, it's a mistake if it says we received the money we simply didn't. We may have been promised unofficially, we have not received one dime.
Well, why wasn't the minutes clear?
You have the, I don't know, I can't tell you that. I know we have never received one dime as the best point. The job, the project now has gone to the point where it's going to cost about $5 million.
Yeah.
Because those were unofficial estimates, that 2.1 million, and of course, everything has gone up.
Yeah.
That was, that's the lowest estimate I've ever heard.
2.6 is on.
Well, the point is, it's going up.
Consider it 2.8 or 3.
There's been a, there's been a study done by the US Department of, the Environmental Protection Agency, United, United States Department of Environmental Protection Agency. They have, they've done a study with a company called Jacobs Engineering, who has done what they call a preliminary engineering report. And this is all to do with this very project. And they, their estimate is about $4.7 million. Given inflation and how long it's going to take to do it, we're just saying roughly $5 million.
Okay, so when you do receive money from the state, who, who, how does it get received?
I don't know, because we've never received any.
Well, when you do get money from the state, from grant or whatever, yeah. Sarah, can you answer this question?
When we get money from the state of Connecticut or federal grants or anything like that, it comes in through one of two accounts. One are STIP accounts, our investment fund with the state of Connecticut, or two are general fund. It depends on which entity is coming from. So it'll come straight into our accounts. I'll get an email saying, hey, on this date, you'll get this much money, and it's for this. And then I just enter it into my books.
Okay, that's what I was just wondering. So this, officially, we've never received.
We never received a thing.
When you get minutes like that, why isn't?
Well, I can't explain that, I really don't know. Who made that statement?
You did.
I must have had a.
This goes with receiving over $2 million from the state for water treatment. And then goes on about ongoing.
I apologize if I said something like that because it is simply not true. We may have been promised.
Does anybody ever?
Pay attention to those minutes?
Read this one before it's sent to the clerk's office? As far as the minutes?
I mean, that statement's up for interpretation. The way you read it is different than the way I read it. They might have just had a discussion about the possibility of receiving it.
Well, in August, it was confirmed for the minutes.
August the 24th?
Yes. I got it right here.
I will, I will apologize from now until November 18th, when I leave the job.
Yeah.
I, we have not received a dime for that job.
Okay, that's right.
If we had, we would be obliged to tell you about it, but we haven't. We don't even know where that money is going to come from.
I have one question. Are those for select minutes or only WPD?
No, this is water pollution control.
Okay, does it have a signature at the end about who made this? I think that would have been Melissa, right?
Melissa Price.
We will check.
She was here at the time, so.
No, I, I took, it's a valid question. I just, I have no idea how that happened because, again, at this point, we'll be, we have another couple meetings coming up, like one's gonna come up next week. And we're, it, this one, the next question basically is, how do we fund this thing?
Yeah.
And we simply don't know that at this point.
Yeah, we're just revisiting the contract for Jason. Again, I don't think it was really clarified at the last meeting when Steve asked what the need was. And it was just kind of stated because Jason asked for it and he was working out the details with the town attorney.
And that's still the situation.
Just wondering why an employee is going to work out a different contract than other employees at the town? Because Layman's understanding already an employee has benefits. So why, why the, you know, the difference? And just asking him as a citizen because of the other town employees not receiving the same consideration?
Is it safe to say that any other town employee asks the same question, would be treated the same way?
Ask what question?
The question, could I have a contract?
Okay.
It never has. Jason's the first and only person that ever asked that. That doesn't mean it couldn't be done. It doesn't mean it, I honestly think Jack is a comment, and I want to make your comment on that.
Yeah, I, I totally understand Jason, why he wants a contract. My feeling is basically the same as stuff, that every employee should be offered a contract, not just one.
What, what specifically is the difference between a contract that Jason's looking for versus what the employees already have?
The employees now are all what they call at-will employees. They are, they're at, they work at the will of this board. Technically, if we could find just cause, we could have anyone removed from their position. Now, but what do we consider to be just cause? It's a very broad definition of that just cause in the, in the handbook and in the law.
Isn't that sort of like, starting to interrupt, isn't that sort of like any employee in the state of Connecticut? Like, you can fire anyone for any reason in the state of Connecticut?
I don't know anything about the state of Connecticut laws, other than the one that affects us. It couldn't be either, I don't know. I, I, I can't comment on that because they don't help. But I know that people here work and at the will of the board of selectmen. There's never been a problem with that in terms of happening. Those, that all changed when we went from elected positions to appointed positions, which is roughly, let's say 20 years ago, I can't tell you the exact date. But the treasurer was elected, town clerk was elected, the Cessna was, then the treasurer and the tax collector were. That's all, that, that whole thing was changed because it was pointed out that it would be extremely difficult to replace the treasurer, if she's a Republican, with another treasurer competent, right? Another Republican, it would be almost impossible. That was all changed to appointed positions. And they do work at the will of the, the board of selectmen.
Correct, so what is the difference between what Jason's asking for?
He would be protected under a contract.
What defines protected?
Jason, why don't you answer that question?
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
I'm, I'm gonna be very vague with this because I don't have the contract on me. There's nothing hidden here. It's really what I thought about this was because I feel, and everybody, every employee's different, but we're gonna have at least two, if not three new bosses come November. So the stuff, when I, when I got hired, it was worked out where recreation is, it's a small, it's a small department with, and I have, I wear different hats. And I'm fine with it, and I'm not complaining at all. However, my job and my hours are a lot different than everybody else in the building. They have a set schedule, like say it's an eight to four, whatever it is, four days a week. Mine isn't. And I'm fine with that, and I've worked that out, you know, with personally and here, to make the program grow at recreation. But it can't be done with the limited people we have or with a set schedule like a, say the same schedule as the town hall. It just can't.
How is the difference with your contract versus what?
I don't know what anybody else has. I know the one that, that I'm looking at doing is not really, the word contract is, basically, I want something in writing to define the terms of my job. That's all it is. Similar to a job description. But when I got hired with, Lincoln hired me, it's 30 hours a week and it's flexibility.
And you have benefits, not.
And I have benefits, yes. And the flexibility is needed. I mean, I, there's days I come in here on Sunday.
So is, is the contract to state like?
I don't, I can't.
Do you have a period of time where you're, you work for five years and you can't get my go?
No, I can't, I don't.
Geez, hasn't been worked out yet.
So I don't want to say anything that is gonna be put in writing that's, that's false, so. But basically, it just defines the terms of the job, that's all it is. And I personally think that's, that's important for everybody.
Job description now?
Our job descriptions were just, okay, we're here.
Very vague.
It's, it's a vague, it's a vague job description and it's been updated a year ago.
Gotcha.
When we had a
Survey.
A survey, a salary study done, so, and that was for the entire town. So I just, again, I feel more comfortable and I think it'd be better than, and everybody knows, it's a seven-day period for recreation. And I am flexible, whether it's mornings, nights, weekends. And that changes on a regular basis. So based on the needs of the town, so.
But could be done on our, one more job description though, instead of our contract?
Then call the job description. I mean, it's just, it's basically a term. It just defines a little bit more detail of what recreation is.
It's just confusing that this, that it keeps getting stated that there's an employment contract that's being worked out with a lawyer. So that just kind of sends like, what is, what is that?
It's not my, it's not my lawyer.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm saying.
And as far as looking at that, to be honest with you, there's a lot on my plate right now. Yes, it's on the list. It's, it's, I'll move it to the top, but it's not really something, I mean, the program is only for that, so.
There's nothing in this, that you're aware of in the contract that says the new administration coming in can, if they decide to change the program?
I don't, I don't know.
You don't like the contract?
No, I haven't, I haven't read it like that in detail, and that's why it's on the agenda.
Gotcha.
So.
Thank you for taking the time to answer, Jason.
One more comment, Peter. In reference to that, so he will not fall under statute, state statutes, is that what you're basically? If, like the other employees, if, now this is always a if, that contract has not been written, has not been discussed by us, has not been signed. So let's include the word if in that, okay? If he were to go under a contract or some different arrangement than the rest of the staff, yes, it would be different than the rest of the employees.
Okay, because you know, you know, every employee, one way or another, is covered under the state statutes, bonded or state statutes or whatever.
More importantly, they're covered under the town statutes.
Yes.
The town ordinance.
Yes.
Any other questions this morning? Or comments of any kind? Then we'll move on. We approve of the minutes of the September 3rd, 2025 regular meeting.
I'll make a motion that we accept the September 3rd regular meeting.
Motion made second, do we accept the minutes of the September 3rd meeting? All in favor? Any discussions of those minutes? There are none, all in favor? I, or both? The motion carries. Next is under correspondence, we have a correspondence from a company called PARE, corporation, that's P-A-R-E. And they are contracted, they have been under, contacted, contracted by, get this one, the United States Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources Conservation Service. That's quite a multiple. And their concern is the, a study of the Wood-Parkettuck River. Sterling happens to be in a position to have, be at the very headwaters of the Wood-Parkettuck River. The Cedar Swamp is that where it starts. And Port Pond is part of that, and it continues to flow through our town into Bonningtown and then down the western side of towns below us. And it goes eventually down the west, it goes down to the shore. So the, apparently, they feel as though improvements need to be made on certain parts of that river. And essentially, what they're telling us is that the two bridges or the two roads that cross that waterway, this would be Cedar Swamp and Brown Road, they should be, have improvements made. Brown Road, they think they should replace the existing culvert, if you will, with two eight-foot, eight-by-eight box culverts or a 16-foot bridge. And Cedar Swamp Road, they're suggesting that the road regrades higher. We all know that would be probably a good possible, good solution. And it should be a four-by-30-inch box culvert or bridge stand. These are projects that they're proposing, there will be our endorsement of that. The, there's no guarantee that the federal government's gonna pay for any of this or even wants any part of it, but they have to start somewhere. What they do is they start with the towns, and if we had an objection to those things, this is what we. I, that both of those places, Brown Road, as far as I'm concerned, that's questionable. That's a culvert that's been there for years, that basically drains the actual Porter Pond. The question on Cedar Swamp Road, if we could improve that somehow, that would be a, a big plus. Underbred at the moment, on the Cedar Swamp Road, there are two 30-inch culverts. And they tend to get plugged up by beavers. And we've had them, one of them, four years ago, we had it cleaned out, and the water levels had maintained quite nicely. The second one, we could never get cleaned out. Anyway, so it's actually functioning on one culvert. They're suggesting a 30, let's see, a four-by-30 box culvert to replace what's there. And they're talking about raising the road. Both of those projects would be ideal, and that, that's what we wanted to talk about that.
Penny, sorry, can I just make one comment?
One comment.
Have you looked into asking Houston's trappers to commit a traffic?
We haven't had that, we've done that again and again. You could hire a tractor there for the entire beaver season and still not keep up with it. We've done that there, we've done that in several places. There's a limited traffic, beaver season, and we hire a tractor to do that. So I think what we should do here, gentlemen, is to endorse the idea of elevating the road and putting in a box culvert and doing what they suggest to do on Brown Road as well. Whether it gets better or not, that's another story entirely, but they're looking for a hardcore.
I wouldn't, our. Prove that. We were hurt to have it done, but I'd like to see who's gonna pay for it.
That would be definitely be a question to ask. But I think we first, we start with the fact that we approve or don't approve of the projects.
I approve, I would mostly approve the project.
And I second, and I feel the same way, those would not pay for it. Motion made second, that we approve these projects that are suggested and define who is going to pay for ones. With the approval is gonna condition that the Sterling, the Sterling doesn't have to pay for the project.
Can I add to that?
You make it.
Roger and I have been on this Wood-Parkettuck stewardship council for a while. He was quite familiar with Brown Road and the Cedar Swamp when they were discussing this in the past. He would be a great person to pull into, you know, decisions on what could be done.
And who are you talking about?
Roger.
Oh, Roger Gibson?
Family in Leavens with me, and then we were also on this Wood-Parkettuck council.
I can have a chat with Roger to verify this, but in general, we are not opposed to these projects. Okay, that, that's all I wanted for one record is saying. Don't cover that? Moving on to unfinished business, we discussed the contract, the possible contract with Jason Lachey.
I tried to work. I tried to. They say before.
Government's.
Government's.
We can talk about that with a lawyer. I'm sure he would do whatever we. This lawyer, by the way, is an attorney who does contractual work for Halloran Sage. He's one of the many lawyers that Halloran and Sage hire. That's the company that we hired to do all of our legal work. And he, he's not the same lawyer that would be doing other things. He just deals in this contract, so, name is, I forgot what his name is at the moment, but we didn't talk to him about that. You want to make that suggestion, David, you want to make a motion or just?
I would, I would.
Unrecorded.
Motion to change the contract to.
What do you think about that, Jeff?
Yeah, agree.
Motion made second, we change the term from contract to job description? All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Okay. Discussion regarding the approval of suggested creation of road resurfacing capital account. The Board of Finance at their last meeting has approved the concept of creating a new capital account. Would make a total of six, I believe, in addition to what, they were told. And this account would be funded from the fund balance, which would be the road, the account would be used specifically for road resurfacing, not road repair and not a normal annual road repair. That money would come out of the budget. The idea of this is for the money, and we have a, a good-sized fund balance at the moment. The question has been raised, why do we have such money, that much money, and not using it in a variety of ways? This would be one way to do it. There would be other ways, but this way, we would create a new capital account that is actually money taken from the fund balance, which is money that's already been taxed. And create a new, an account for that. It would not eliminate the need to go to a town meeting for approval. It has, that is no way to get around that issue. This would be a fund balance, a capital account created just for the, the purpose of road resurfacing. If we would agree to this, that we had, we set a meeting date for a town meeting and, you know, the town, obviously, the voters have to decide on it.
I think we made, I made a motion.
Was that again?
I think we, I, I made a motion on thing.
And our second. Motion made second, that we, that we go to town meeting to create a capital account for road resurfacing. Any more discussion on that? If not, all in favor?
All right.
I, all opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item C, discussion regarding approval installation of fencing at the park. That's gonna happen on, start on the 29th of this month. Discussion regarding email addresses for both the selectmen, chairman of board of finance, Dylan Leventhal, planning his own economic development. And actually, you told me that those are all just all, all done?
Yeah.
That, that, that properties have been complete? Okay. Discussion regarding new camera, wifi, heavily locking electric covers for the gazebo. The board of finance approved that money, and so the IT department is in the process of getting all that equipment ready for installation. And the same can be said for the next item, which is the new camera in the gym for the recreation department. The same story, all that money has been approved at a board of finance meeting, and that will, they're in the process of buying all that equipment. Discussion regarding retirement funds for town home employees, Sarah.
So we propose looking at the new 401, sorry, the new IRA retirement fund with the National Life. I can't remember the exact name of the company, but it's National Life. Because I received an email from Sarah over at the school saying that the current plan we have right now, the terms, and how long we have to wait to get on the plan, is changeable. So I reached out to a couple different people at American Funds, and I'm just waiting for an answer back from someone.
Okay. So we'll just table this round?
Table it.
Most of the table this way?
Make a motion to table.
Shut it. All in favor? My motion, motion carries. Okay. Discussion regarding court conduct. Court conduct that we have here in front of us is a updated, improved version of the one that all the employees and eleven commission members signed about a year ago. That was, this is just an improved version, I suggest. We each look at this for the next two weeks, come back for our meeting in, the first meeting in October, and approve it or disapprove it, one or the other. So you would say we can table this today? Motion made second, that we table this, this kind of building toward conduct and workplace harassment policy until our next meeting in the first Wednesday of October. All in favor?
All right.
All in. Discussion regarding recreation department finances slash budget, Jason.
This is on the agenda because of my needs last week to request these, the revenue. As you all know, we're charged with, with bringing in revenue of $75,000 this past budget cycle. We exceeded that amount by $29,000. So my request at that point was to, because we may be met the goal, so that helps defray the cost of the budget, which is how the budget works. And it says $29,000 left over. Rather than going to the general fund, I requested to go into a capital account for recreation for a few different items. But most of that would go into, it would sit there, basically, because we have, we don't have a lot of other money coming in, and that will go towards maybe improvement, major improvements on appeals. The playstaves. Playstave is, it's been there a while, there's issues with it, it needs to be addressed. So, and these things aren't cheap. So I'm looking at putting that into account when we need to use that. So that could be for items such as, you know, when I got here, I started a list of, you know, I had a vision, you know, I started a five-year plan of different projects that we, I thought, you know, we could, the town could benefit from. One would be a pickleball court, two would be a state bar. And we also have improvements on the existing facilities we have. So that money would go towards items like that.
Hey, I have, I have a question.
Yes.
When we did the budget, not the revenue side, but on the budget side, I mean, I don't know what the number is, but you put in, say, a hundred thousand dollars to him. And $75,000, you're gonna have money come in to offset. But the town, would they really be responsible for like $25,000?
$125,000. It's a $200,000 budget.
It's 200, it's far.
Let's use an understatement, I'm just trying to, but if.
If you're, you increase your programs and, and the cost to the town, that 100,000 now goes to 125,000. The extra money that you got would have come in, say, you got 25 more thousand dollars over and above what you got. So that could really be 100,000. That money should go to, to offset the budget that, that you have now.
Okay. I'm not following you.
All right. What is it, I think you meant to go from the same thing you did the other night, Jason.
Yeah. Okay, so, so our budget, rough numbers are $200,000. We were charged with bringing in $75,000 in revenue.
Right.
To offset that.
How does that, how does that money, do you give, determine, the $75,000?
That goes in through, through programs. So the after-school program, summer, the summer program and the after-school program, two biggest, biggest. I would say money being first, but that's where the money comes in, comes from the people.
Right.
When we do, we, we hold our basketball league, which I'm trying very hard to make it our only. We have other, we have fun nights on Friday nights. Every program we have that has a charge, that money goes in to help defray the cost of that 200. So we're charged with 75. We brought in the 75. We brought in another $59,000. Twenty nine, twenty twenty, sorry, $29,000 over that. So we, we met the goal.
But how much did your budget for the, the overall budget for $200,000? If you put another program in, that program, you're gonna need more people, so that's gonna increase your $200,000 budget that you actually put in.
Okay, you're still up. So are you, you want me to create a program?
No, no, what, what, what I'm saying is, if you're, if the new program costs you 20, say $30,000.
Okay.
Over and above your 200,000. Now you're bringing in $29,000 in revenue. That revenue should go towards that extra money that the budget went over.
I will say, his budget did not get exceeded this year. He came in under budget.
Okay, well, this is what I'm saying, but if it did go over budget, that money should go for that extra money that.
To cover the cost that we're all. Right, no, I, I know what you're saying now. But it didn't go over the 200.
Okay.
And I will say that $29,000 that he did end up bringing in extra from the $75,000, as of right now, that's just going into the fund balance as money to, money for the town.
Right.
So essentially, what he's asking is to move that money from the fund balance into his own rep capital account to use it.
Yeah, I can see that, but I just wanna make sure that if it's the, if you put in a new program and you get extra money for that program, but it costs extra money.
No, I, I know what you're saying, yes. I, I won't, I won't go, I, the way I see it is, we're giving $200,000 to provide the people. And that's it. So if it's $200,000 in cash, then I have that to spend. And if I, if I go over by a hundred dollars, I have no money to spend. So I can't. That's, that's the way I'm, I'm looking at it. I need a budget, the recreation budget, on a regular basis. Because things go up and things go down. Whether we need, if I plan on four-staff people for this event, and we needed six, that means I'm gonna be over. I need to make up for that somewhere else. So this is a, a regular thing with this budget. So because I, I don't want to go over, because I know what's gonna be said if I do go over. So you just can't do it. So that's why this money, I mean, if, it's up, so when I went to the Board of Finance, they put it back on the selectmen to make that decision.
Yeah.
And if, that's totally up to you, if we don't have it, we don't have it. But things need to be addressed, and if it's immediate, the safety issue, I'll bring it to your attention, but these things aren't cheap. So, I mean, if we don't, I mean, we put money in the budget last year, and that's why our, our budget did go up by twenty thousand dollars. Um, because the plan was to address the field, and I'd like to put it in the ball field, over there, a real ball field. And I'll do it as cost-efficient as possible. Um, I think it'd be great for the town, a lot of people will come to me with field issues. I've concentrated mostly on budget and program since I've been here to try and build that up. And if you build it, they will come. And so now the, the, the goal is to spend more time at the fields, which is basically part. Um, I mean, it's not a make or break it, if that's not something that is in the cards, it's not in the cards, but.
The way the Board of Finance left it on last Wednesday night was they approved the concept of what he's suggesting. The, the money in excess of what is the anticipated goal, this year, twenty-nine thousand dollars. The anticipated goal next year, maybe eighty-five thousand, so I think the whole bridge may be less than that. But they approved the concept that, that, that this board should decide what to do with that extra money.
Can we clarify, it's not extra money?
It's above and beyond his anticipated goal.
His anticipated.
That's what I'm, that's what I.
Extra money would be over and above his actual budget.
The, um.
And I can't promise, and I don't wanna be held to this, that, that right now, it's eighty-five thousand right in the ship. All that money is based on, is based on enrollment and people that, I mean, our enrollment, which means that and the goal is eighty-five, I can't see why we wouldn't do that. Um, but to go over, it's not really, if it happens, it happens.
What I'm suggesting we do, because the Board of Finance approved it, and they suggested we deal with it, is that there are motions be made, that we allow him to take the money in excess of his stated goal. In this case, twenty-nine thousand dollars, no, no guarantee it's gonna be that much, thank you. To create an account that he can spend with the approval of the Board of Slender.
I'll make a motion. I should know.
Motion made seconded, you've heard the motion, any, any further discussion on this? If not, then we'll, uh, all in favor? Uh, I, there's a second issue that the Board of Finance dealt with last week in terms of how the money is reconciled, the money that you bring in, cash, checks. And they also approved the concept of the way you do it now. We need to make that official too, because we are the board that Jason answers to. He wanted to run it by the Board of Finance, make sure they approved it, and they did. They said, whatever you're doing now is working, and you should continue to do it. I just think it's safe, if we, as a board here, were to make a motion to adopt the same thing, with the, based on the Board of Finance's approval, we should make a motion to, to agree that the concept, the procedure that you're using now, the account money, and if they're done with the treasurer, that we should approve this and make a motion to that effect.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, accept the Finance Committee's, um, recommendation of the Finance Commission.
Motion made seconded, we accept the Finance, the Board of Finance Committee, Board of Finance's recommendation is how the finances are counted and accounted for. All in favor?
I.
All opposed? Issues that, they give a mo, motion back. Grouping of the bills. Motion, I am, present. Motion made, we pay the bills as presented, or your second? You know, I should, uh, motion made seconded, we pay the bills as presented, all in favor?
I.
Uh, motion carries. Transit report, which would be this whole quick document, those are what the, that's what they're. Why do you guys need to buy it? Even if this are the.
I'll provide mine, if I have glasses next time.
Okay.
I'll provide mine, if I have glasses next time, don't worry.
I've got a really neat rig at home, I can bring, it looks a little funny, but it does work. And it's easy to do, it works right off the. This is an actual accounting of everybody's, all the, they have to count the number, I didn't, I haven't, I forgot the number, how many actual line items do we have?
Over a hundred.
Is two-hundred and twenty-one, I think. And this is not exactly what's happened so far, and we're obviously only three months into the year, not, not quite three months, but, um.
I spent twenty percent. Only one percent, no, I spent twenty-one percent.
Twenty-one percent of the budget, so. The seventy-nine percent go. You have any questions for Sarah on this budget, or the bill? We've already approved the bill, that wasn't a budget.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. Motion made, we, Jack, you wanna?
I'll second it.
Motion made seconded, that we approved the track report. All in favor?
I.
All, motion carries, all in favor of any other business? I have a report on the paving, we've had, um, Porpon Road and Lego Road have been chip sealed. That process is complete, um, except for, because apparently the company's gonna come back, we're, we're told later this week, to sweep those roads, getting up the excess stone. And they have a project, they have a process called fog sealing, which apparently seals everything in place. That's what's left to do on those two roads, but the chip sealing project portion is done. Both roads came on quite well.
Porpon, no.
Yeah, and I went on the Lego Road this morning, earlier this morning, and it's, it's very good. So those are done, except for those, the sweeping and the fog sealing, and we have paving this one going on on, um, Spring Lake Road, starting about the twenty-ninth of this month, I believe, that road will be paved with traditional asphalt, and that way, that will be finished.
Who's doing that?
Pinecrop, Pinecrop paving out of wood style.
You know what I noticed was, uh, Guam and, uh, there's the other one that we had. With the chip seal on it, they did almost every road that they built in the past, with the company that we had.
Mm-hmm. Highway rehab?
Highway rehab, down through the center, there, there was a, a line. You know, it's like they, they didn't get the chip stone in the middle of it, and, and on the, the one that we did, that this company here, you couldn't see that.
No seal at all, no, it's completely covered. It's gonna be interesting what it looks like once they sweep the excess stone off it.
Yeah.
Um, I would assume that they put down a layer of three-eighths of stone, then they put on a second layer of quartered stone, and that's of course, what's gonna be swept up on the road.
Right, yeah.
Um, the, and then the ceiling part, I'm assuming you just have to, you know, kind of glaze it over if you will, I, I, I really don't know any other way to put it, but. I'm impressed so far, I think the roads have come very nicely.
Yeah.
Um, we all know that none of us are terribly happy with the highway rehab project. And there's a, I think there's a very good chance we're gonna be pleased with this. Anyone have anything to tell me for the board? Yes?
Um, part of the creation of the road resurfacing account, um, line item was the, the capital transfers, or the capital accounts that were approved by the Board of Finance. That wasn't discussed. We, we just needed to set a town meeting to get those approved.
The money that was kept, we never went to that meeting for that?
The, the capital fund transfers?
Mm-hmm.
We, we haven't gone to a town meeting, that was approved by the Board of Finance.
Quite a while ago.
Just this past Board of Finance meeting. No, that Excel sheet. Yes.
Yeah.
Like beavers.
We didn't set one today for a date for a town. We need to set a town meeting date, so that should come under any other business, thank you, Sarah. Yeah, um, and if I have a calendar that we can, and I have a calendar that we can. We've been hunting on town meetings in September. Okay. On Thursday evening, typically, um, somehow it works out best. We need to stay awake for the last Thursday, the one, which would be the thirtieth. Kim, you, your board, the inland one would be on the fourth Thursday or the last Thursday?
Usually last.
Okay, so that would be, and October, that'd be the thirtieth?
Yeah, I can check.
I'm looking at David's calendar here. So we guess, that, if we're gonna do a Thursday night, we have to stay awake from that meeting night, that's all. Is that going? Yeah. Let's go back, okay. Nine sixteen twenty, two nine sixteen twenty-three thirty. How much time do we need, actually, to kind of go in the paper? Pending?
Yes.
Is there something for us to get up for the sixteen?
I'm looking at my calendar. So we meet on the twenty-third of October.
Okay, so that's the fourth Thursday.
Yeah, this month it is.
And this? I suggest we set that, set that meeting date for the, uh, the sixteen of October. It gives us plenty of time to do now and then to get the paper, get the notes up.
In that same meeting, we could do the approval for the road resurfacing account creation too.
And what, and what?
The creation of the road resurfacing account?
Yeah.
We can do that.
Right, they should be done the same time, right. You asked.
What time?
Uh, seven o'clock is normally, I do that.
Wait, one, one question, uh, we just had a PMC meeting, we're holding a, uh, town meeting in October, you might wanna check with them for us. Um, I think it's the sixteenth or seventeenth, yeah, you might wanna. We're, we're, we're having a town meeting on a.
Do you have the morning, that Sunday meeting? That was Monday night meeting?
Yeah, I don't have it yet.
Okay. Well, pending, we have the other meeting.
Yeah.
We will hold one on the sixteenth.
Hold one. And, and just try to bring it up.
Any other business? You got, I'm gonna have to say, motion. Motion made? Seconded, the meeting. All in favor?
I.